I salute the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the Z S symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Great. I appreciate everybody being here today. It should be exciting. Bet you can't wait. We'll get started with our roll call. Joan, please.
Chris Mortensen.
Here.
Charles Long.
Here.
Michael Shaw.
Here.
Priscilla Benali.
Kozita.
Kevin Mitchell.
All right, we have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and get started. The first item is approval of today's agenda. Is there any questions?
I move to approve the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Second by Mr. Shaw. Roll call, please.
Ms. Benali?
Oh.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Next item is approval of our minutes from our December sixteen, twenty twenty-four meeting. Are there any questions about this, or will I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve minutes of December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Ms. Benali?
Oh.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Next item is our consent agenda items. Item four, A, B, C, D.
Mr. Mortensen, we have.
Oh, yeah, I apologize. Let's circle back up. We'll circle back up to recognition. For that, I'll turn the time over to Mr. Hyatt.
President Mortensen, members of the board, welcome to a new year of board business. And we're excited this year to recognize our spelling bee champions from this last year, or from this year's spelling bee. And so Mr. Bell is going to announce the winners that we have here today. And then, once he's done, we'd like to have, actually, let's have the board go up in the front. So that we can take, shake their hands and get a picture with them. And we also want to make sure that we congratulate them. We appreciate our youth and our community and the hard work that they do, and it's awesome to recognize this accomplishment.
So, members of the board, thank you for inviting the spelling bee to come and present before you. Just so everyone knows, this is actually the hundredth anniversary of the spelling bee. It started in nineteen twenty-five. This year will be the, not for the district, for the entire organization. So this will be the hundredth time that we've had a spelling bee at the national level. So I just want to tell you, the spelling bee is something that parents and students take a lot of pride in. It is a sport to these kids. I actually met one of the national champions one time. Kim Orr was one of the national champions from Montana. And she said it is the most stressful thing she's ever done in her life once you get into Washington DC. So I just want to, these kids have put a lot of effort into this. This is a lot of work. A lot of words are not phonetically correct, so they have to know how to spell them. It's, a lot of it's memorized. So I just want to tell you, these kids put a lot of effort into this. We have two of the three kids here today that won the spelling bee. Who was our coordinator this year for the principal's spelling bee to announce the first, the second place first.
So one of our spelling bee champions couldn't be here today. It's Madison Chavis. And she was our third runner-up. When she went down at school, the word she went down on was cello. It's kind of a rough one. But our second runner-up is here. Erica James from Theroux Elementary. She's a fourth grader. And the word that took her out was realm. Did she go out on that one, or did she have an other? Okay. Realm. That's tough. These young ladies will be taking an online spelling bee, be in an online spelling bee, and then they will go on to Albuquerque, I believe. I'm not quite sure how the online's going to work yet. We might ask Christie. So our first runner-up is Christine Nielsen from Rehoboth Elementary.
First place.
First place. I'm sorry, first place. And if you were there, you got to see a lot of jumping and yelling. She was so thrilled. And this has been her dream since second grade. So she's really been practicing.
Let's give them one more round of applause. These students will be presenting, will be, be going to Sandia Prep in March for the state spelling bee. So congratulations one more time, everybody. And a special thanks, Ms. Mauer, for hosting this and setting this up. And also thanks to Kerry Labata, who was the pronouncer that day of the spelling bee. And the judge, Mr. Hyatt. Let's not forget about Mr. Hyatt. You were the head bell ringer.
Miss Prieto and Miss Bischoff.
And Miss Eva Prieto and Kristen Bischoff, two of my directors of instructions, were the other two judges. And again, thank you both for coming today.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. That concludes our recognition, Mr. Mortensen, for today.
Thank you very much. Great job, ladies. That was exciting. I love meeting our champions and seeing our students do good at every level and in everything that they want to. The next item here is, back to where we were at, was the approval of the consent agenda items. Item four, A, B, C, D, and E. Are there any questions, board members, about any of these items?
Mr. Mortensen, I'd like to motion to approve, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Is there a second down there?
Second.
Second by Mr. Shaw. Roll call, please.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Next item is study circle five. Is there any public comment today, Mr. Hyatt?
No.
No public comment?
No.
Okay, and then I'll turn the time over to Mr. Hyatt for our superintendent report.
President Mortensen, members of the board, we have been working with our lobbyist for a presentation on our priorities. I know that he just let us know that he is coming out of a meeting, hopefully soon. I don't think he is quite available, though. So, Mr. President, I'm not sure how, we want to go about this, but we can go through the agenda as is. And then, when he is available, maybe we can squeeze him in. Would that work for?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Everybody all right with that? Okay. And that's fine. We can kind of go with the flow with that.
Deputy Superintendent Hanks is communicating with him, and so she'll give us the thumbs up or come up and let us know. So, before we go on to our next presentation, I just want to answer some questions about what we've been receiving lately about immigration and ICE. We've got a lot of questions in recent days about what the school district does and those types of situations. The school board policy around federal agents working with schools, or whether they need to interview students, or whatever it might be, is covered in a policy that most school districts in the state have the exact same policy. Students have FERPA rights that we have to protect, protect as a school district. We also make sure that we are obviously in communication with guardians over things that happen in the school. We have a board policy on that that we've had for many, many years. And that board policy is still in place, and so we will follow that as we have in the past. It is not super uncommon for FBI or other law enforcement or agencies that come into the school. Some may want to interview students, or whatever it might be. We don't do anything. We don't allow people to interview students unless it has to do with child abuse situations, where that might stem from the guardian. That's a unique situation. That rarely happens, but it has. And so there's unique circumstances for that kind of situation. But when federal agents come into our school, with this FBI or anybody else, we have a protocol that we follow where we notify parents and we try to contact them. We can't just release students to federal agencies. We can't allow interviews to federal agents for any purpose. Again, they have, students have FERPA rights, and so we protect those. And so I know that board members have been receiving some questions. We've been answering a few questions. But again, that's our, that's our policy, and that's what we follow to protect students and to comply with the law. With that, we prepared a, well, I didn't prepare, but I helped facilitate a little bit and gave some ideas. But we have a great team. Mr. Jake Stokes, who is over many different things, a director, one of which is over safety. We also have Kaidan Montano, Assistant Superintendent. And they have also worked with Darren. Oh, Darren, Mr. Solon, yeah, I used to call him Darren. Darren Solon, who oversees our security. And they have done a great job at preparing a presentation to talk about something that's happening in not only just our community, it's happening across the state of New Mexico since marijuana has been legalized. We wanted to share with you, I won't spoil it all, but essentially how the marijuana industry is marketing to students, marketing to youth.
Mr. Mortensen? I have a question before we move on to the next subject, about the immigration.
Go ahead, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Mortensen. Mr. Hyatt, I just wanted to ask to see, since we are getting questions at the board level and through your administration on this topic, have you or can you please send the information that you just provided the board to the adminis, head administrators of our school district principals? So they just have a reminder, and they have our board policy of FERPA and, you know, that they just can't be released to anybody or questioned by anybody. So then, that will ease a lot of people's minds that we did remind and send those documentations to the principals, sir.
Sure, I will. And I want to add that it's in any situation, even if it's not a federal agent, if somebody comes into a school, we have certain people on the checkout form that have access to students. We're pretty controlled in that manner to make sure that access to students is protected and that those students are protected. And so what we can do, we, it happens once in a while with FBI and things like that, that are coming to the schools that have questions. But yeah, we'll definitely, maybe we'll post that today on the website so people have access to it. It's also publicly available in our board policies. If you just search police or search arrest or search any of those kind of items, it pops up on our board policies. And so, yes, I'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Montano?
President Mortensen, members of the board, thank you for letting me present this today. Today, we're going to talk about marketing marijuana THC to students, how that's changed through the years. So I'm going to talk a little bit about THC marijuana products and how it's becoming more widespread among students. This growing trend poses significant challenges for our school administrators and staff. And it's actually making it an uphill battle for us on combating drugs in our schools. Before we get into the marketing, I want to talk a little bit about the dangers associated with THC use with our youth today. There's a lot of negative health impacts for our youth. The use of THC products is associated with negative impacts on the adolescent brain. It affects learning, memory, attention, the changes in the brain development. And it can even cause disorders associated with depression and suicide. Okay, sorry, I'm on the wrong slide. The indicators that we are seeing in schools include lethargy, uncoordinated movements, decreased psycho motor activity, slurred speech, increased heart rate, and then it increases the heart, slows it down and increase. We see both of those. Low blood pressure, slowed breathing, sedation. And in severe cases, it could even lead into coma. The adverse effects for students, and I'm not going to read this to you, it's in your packets, but I just want to highlight a couple of things. Weekly marijuana use in students under the eighteen years of age can be associated with an eight-point drop in intelligence. Not only is school performance affected, but also our student athletes. Overall, it's showing lower educational achievement levels. So when someone smokes marijuana, the chemical can stay in their bodies for weeks, even months. So this really affects our students with their attention span, memory, comprehension, and it can be affected for days. It has lasting negative impacts. Also, with our student athletes, it can impair their hand-eye coordination, slower reaction time, reduced motor coordination, tracking ability. All of these skill impairments can last up to twenty-four to twenty-six hours after use. So it can definitely affect our big gains. There is New Mexico state law that surrounds targeting marketing tactics with our students. And I've highlighted those in our, in your packet. The packages and labels should not be designed to appeal to a child. And that's what we're fighting today. So just not too many years ago, the challenges we saw with marijuana were easily detected. You can see some of the, I guess these are the old pictures of what we used to see in our schools. Just bags of marijuana, a joint, the smell was easily detected. And this is what we're starting to see today. So very deceptive marketing tactics that entice our students. So we have here Skittles and Nerds that are laced with THC.
Can you go back to that one?
Yes.
I don't know if your controller's working. I have to get you a license for that.
Finally figured it out.
I just want to notice, like, how long it would take you, I know it's not the best picture, it's a little far away, but even the ones in your packet, you can't really tell. It's difficult to tell, but I remember when I first saw these pictures and I've seen items come into the schools. They're very deceptive. I think they're required to mark on the package, but they don't say like what size, I don't think. So very few of them have a little faint description of what might be in there.
Right, faint.
They're very small. Sorry, go ahead.
Probably.
Kaidan?
Yes.
I have a question. You know, these packaging and all that, according to state law, you're not supposed to be doing it. Do you know if the state is doing anything about it after these?
So, at the end of my presentation, Sheriff Mariano is going to come up and talk a little bit about that, about some of the laws, as well as things we're seeing across McKinley County and how we're, think about the black market, the gray market, there's different ways people are getting their hands on these items and how it's getting into McKinley County. So if you'll hold that thought. More of the current marketing, we see a lot of gummies and vapes. Those are probably the two most popular things we are seeing right now. And as you can see, the gummies look just like the ones we buy in the stores, the gummy worms, as well as the gummy bears. And this one's pretty shocking with the vapes. They are, it just seems to get younger and younger. This is targeted to very young children. The far picture on the right shows the little containers, the drinking containers. The first one is, on the left is a e-cigarette. And then the other one is a regular drink container. So it shows the, how they just look so similar. And then edible packaging, you can see in the pictures, it's even gone up to juices. But you can see the chips, cookies, and the different items that would entice our students. And more of the edible packaging, chocolate, of course, Hot Cheetos, we know everybody loves those. And then we've got cookies as well. And as you can see, some of the names are changed slightly, but some, it's very vague to show what is in there. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Stokes, and he's going to talk about some of the things that are found on our GMCS campuses.
Good afternoon, President Mortensen, members of the board. Just to expand a little bit on what Ms. Montano said, yes, we found not everything in these pictures, but a good, large number of items in these pictures. We won't go into too much detail, but we have found cookies, Doritos. At least last year, Doritos were a big hit, unfortunately. They come in different flavors, and they do have deceptive marketing tactics. I think Mr. Mariano, Sheriff Mariano, here in a moment, we'll talk a little bit more about the legal aspect of it. But we do have issues where students, if it's brought to a school at a young enough age, they might not know. And that is very, very worrisome, especially for our younger kids. By the time they get to high school, they have a better conception of what it is that they're consuming. But in the elementary schools, they might be handed something, thinking it's candy. And it's very unfortunate what follows after an event like that. So we try to keep up with educating our administrators in our schools, what to look for and things like that. But it's a very, it's a very scary time, really, to have an environment where things like this are flooding all over the community. We have incidents where, as I mentioned, we have cookies, THC vape pens, and they're colorful. They have a whole variety of language on them, and they're meant to, as Ms. Montano said, entice students to give it a try. And it's unfortunate. So we're trying to provide curriculum and education to help combat many of these threats.
If I could add, maybe you're going to touch on this, Ms. Montano. We've had multiple students go to the hospital for things that you're seeing on this screen and others, for ingesting things. This isn't something that just results in students becoming high. Actually, multiple occasions have had, especially in the last year, year and a half, multiple students going to the hospital for ingesting these types of items. So it's a serious concern, not just for the, because of the illegality of it for the youth, because the harm it's specifically doing them, not beyond their brain, actually physically and putting people in the, putting our youth in the hospital.
May I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Are, I mean, are, are most of these, like, these types of products, are they from, I mean, I know that their, their marketing is disreputable, but are they coming from, like, I guess reputable vendors? Or is this just like somebody, like, photoshopping some packaging at home and, you know, homemaking, whatever? I mean, how does this stuff work?
So they can be bought on the internet. So a lot of that is coming through, I think, then they're resold. I think some of the shops here in Gallup, and I think Sheriff Mariano will talk about that, some of the newer things we're seeing as well. And even into highlighters that are vapes and things like that, that we are seeing coming into the schools.
The concern is, I mean, like, like Mr. Hyatt said, I mean, the concern is, is, yeah, I mean, if it's some homemade thing, like, who knows, who knows what the heck is in it, you know, or whatever? I mean, it isn't, you know, there, there's no real official packaging or standard or anything like that. I mean, it could have, I don't know, rat poison in it, or who, I don't know. I don't know. I don't want to sound like alarmist or whatever, but I mean, who the heck knows what's in it?
I would also add that the items that we're looking at on these pages, I mean, this is a lot of money involved in the marketing and design of these. And so the ones that we're showing here are definitely produced by somebody with a lot more money than somebody doing something at home. But yeah, sometimes things from here can get packaged pretty easily with a label on a bag, and students don't know what they are in those circumstances. But yeah, specifically here, we're talking about how companies and/or large producers of some sort are expending a lot of money to target packaging that tailors towards youth interest. But even if you look at the storefronts, remember when the one down here on sixty-six opened? And somebody said there's a new dessert shop in town because it had cake on there and neon lights or whatever? I'm not necessarily saying those are specifically targeting youth, but they're definitely enticing to maybe the childish or hungry side of people. But yeah, I mean, some states don't allow that. I don't believe they allow that kind of marketing, even on their signage for their, for their stores. But in New Mexico, you see that kind of dessert shop look to a lot of them. Other states I've seen, things like Nevada, I've been through, unless they've changed it. It's very clear that it's not a student or youth-oriented facility or place to do business. It's targeting adults.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes, ma'am.
A question, I don't know if this will be brought up by Sheriff Mariano, but what are the penalties? I know there's penalties if you go as an adult to purchase alcohol for underage minors. I think that's not really brought out. We know this is wrong. But I think what scared a lot of adults was every time we said, if you buy alcohol for someone that's not old enough to drink yet, these are the penalties. And I think the same thing needs to be done with these, because we're not really saying what the penalties are if an adult buys this for the kids. Because I'm sure you're not allowed at sixteen, seventeen years old to go into a smoke shop to purchase this, correct?
We'll find out. Shouldn't, I know that's the law, you can't, but I don't know whether there's strategies people are using to get.
So I think we really need to push the penalties of what will happen if you are buying these for youth.
The next slide, I just want to point out again, these items were found on GMCS campuses. And I believe most of them are vapes. I'm going to let Mr. Stokes talk about it.
So particularly the photo on the right, that isn't really a gummy or a candy. Those are actual THC-laced vape pens. They were pulled off of an individual, not this school year, but a prior school year. And if you can, you can't quite see from the picture, you have to get up close. But there's a total of roughly eighty-four THC-infused vape pens, and this was pulled off of one individual. Now, most of the time, yeah, and most of the time, this is, that's not the norm. You know, I want to be clear, individual type, you know, two or three, like the first photo or the second photo you see. But the fried, if you take a good look at that picture on the left with the green, as Mr. Hyatt said, is absolutely a marketing tactic tailored towards a particular audience, so.
So with all that said, the things that we are currently working on now are some preventative measures that we're working with the schools on. We are bringing back Dare into the elementary schools that's starting this semester. The SNAP essay presentations, that is with all schools, that is working with our teen court. Counseling groups, we have sessions for groups that are SSAs and counselors work on with schools based on needs. We did have some red ribbon campaigns back in the fall. We have a vape task force that we've implemented this year where we are coming up with ideas on how we can support our administrators in the schools, working with this. And we're also working on a new program that is a self-reporting program called Stop It. And that's fixing to launch in the next week. And of course, we're working on parent and community education. We have an ad or an article coming out in Elevate magazine. We do social media posts. We have current ads right now, running on the radio, newspaper. And again, there will be more to come on resources with the Stop It program. So with that, before I turn it over to Sheriff Mariano, I just wanna say that we are committed to maintaining a drug-free environment for all students and staff. And we do provide support for students who are in need. So we work with our counselors with that. It is, this is a very important initiative that we wanna hold up and uphold a drug-free school environment. And we appreciate the board listening to that, as well as the community, to help us maintain those goals. Sheriff Mariano?
Well, good afternoon, Superintendent, Chairman, and members of the board. My name's James Mariano, I'm the elected sheriff in McKinley County. And in working with Gallup McKinley County Schools, and working with Superintendent Hyatt, Mr. Soland, and Ms. Montano, I think we've come up with a couple of things. First and foremost is, on the table that you see to your left, my right, all those products I brought with me out of our evidence have come from Gallup McKinley County Schools, BIE schools in McKinley County, as well as some stuff we've pulled off the interstate with folks trying to distribute. So in 2019, New Mexico passed a law that states that the recreational use of cannabis would be legal under certain parameters. What we saw in the newspaper was just, "It's legal." We didn't see what those parameters were, what the penalties were, who could possess it, who couldn't possess it. It just went out statewide, "It's legal." So what we're struggling with is, even though the items you see on the table in front of you may be legal for each one of us to possess, it's illegal for anyone under the age of twenty-one to possess. That's the message that's not really out there. If you, any one of you as an individual possessed everything on the table inside your car, you're going to be arrested for possible distribution, because it's too much. That's another thing the state did not do a great job at advertising, was how much of this product are you allowed to have on your person at any given time? Where are you allowed to use it? So if I might, I'll go through a couple of the New Mexico statutes that specifically pertain to cannabis products in the state of New Mexico. So first and foremost is, it's unlawful for anyone under the age of twenty-one to possess any THC product. Whether that's a smokable product, whether that's a plant, whether it's an edible, or whether it's a vape, it's unlawful to possess. In the state of New Mexico, that's a misdemeanor currently. And this is something that we need to meet with our legislators on and get some of these things changed. In 2019, when they passed the laws, we met as a Sheriff's Association with sheriffs from Colorado and said, "What problems did you encounter?" And they mentioned everything New Mexico is encountering right now, right off the bat. And that was, it rolled out too fast, it rolled out too quick, and there was not enough time and money put into education and enforcement. It was just rolled out, and then the products became prevalent everywhere. It's also unlawful to smoke, vape, or ingest any marijuana products in a public place. So you're not allowed to do this on the sidewalk, in a parking lot, at the mall. This has to occur on a private residency or a private establishment that has applied for the appropriate permits and made it legal to do so. I.e. a motel room, a vaping lounge, or personal property owned by an individual that has allowed for it to occur.
One moment.
Yeah?
For the on-premises Gallup passed, where they cannot consume on the premise of the establishment selling the...
Wonderful.
In Gallup, and just in Gallup.
All right, so within the city limits, it's a city ordinance that you cannot ingest, smoke, or use these products on the establishment that you purchased it from. Which would prevent a lounge, which we're seeing pop up in Las Cruces and Albuquerque and other areas like a liquor establishment, where you can purchase the product and then use it on the property. Okay, great. It's also unlawful to possess or distribute any amount of cannabis product near or on the premises of a daycare or a school. That has been raised, so we have that, that's twenty-six dash two dash twenty-nine, and that's when we have up to put some more strict penalties on. These are not felonies, these are misdemeanors. But I'll jump to the felonies, and that's when it gets to school campuses. So it's unlawful for a person eighteen years or older to give or provide cannabis to anyone under the age of eighteen with a three-year junior gap, okay? So if you're eighteen, seventeen, sixteen, fifteen, if an eighteen-year-old sells to a fifteen-year-old, you now have a fourth-degree felony, similar to contributing to the delinquency of a minor. So anyone over the age of eighteen pushing these products to people under the age of eighteen, that is a fourth-degree felony currently in the state of New Mexico. That's punishable by up to five thousand dollars in fines and up to three years in jail. Distributing marijuana in a drug-free school zone, and every school zone in New Mexico is considered a drug-free school zone, becomes a first-degree felony, punishable by up to eighteen years in jail and a twenty thousand dollar fine. So there are some hefty ones that are in play for school campuses. It's not so much when you leave the school campus, but we at least have three specific statutes in New Mexico that address schools. Having it on the premise, selling to people, or adults attempting to sell to juveniles. All three of those would pertain to any school campus in McKinley County.
Sheriff Mariano?
Yeah?
You said there has to be a three-year gap, or three-year, so how about if it's a twelve-year-old?
If the twelve-year-old sells it, there needs to be a three-year gap between the person selling the drugs and the person buying or receiving the drugs. And it doesn't have to be a sale, it can just be a handoff. So if I'm over the age of eighteen and the person I hand it off to is under the age of eighteen, that's similar to contributing to delinquency of a minor, that's a fourth-degree felony. So anyone over the age of eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, the person they're handing it to or selling it to needs to be three years younger than them in order for this statute to work. The reason that they did that is from eighteen to seventeen, or nineteen to eighteen. It's the same thing they did with contributing to the delinquency of a minor or some of the sexual violence-related crimes. There has to be a specific age gap. We can petition our legislators and senators to change that and close that gap. To if you're eighteen and you give it to a seventeen-year-old, you should be guilty of the same crime. And I would agree with you, that's just how it stands currently. All right, so as you can see here, and you saw in the photos, a lot of this stuff is being branded in what we would consider to be, to juveniles, right, to children. The New Mexico statutes and the Regulation and Licensing Division that handle this stuff basically state that New Mexico, if you're producing it in the state of New Mexico, it can't be advertised to children by the use of cartoon characters. It can't be advertised on FCC-based radio stations or radio advertisements. And it can't be advertised where juveniles would frequent. That's basically the breadth of the law. It's not a lot. What you see here on the table, I mean, Skittles and several other companies have already sued these manufacturers for using their brands, for using their names. In the large bag that you see to your left, there are Skittles, Nerds, Nerd Ropes. I think there's a couple of other ones in there that, the Stony Patch Kids, Sour Patch Kids. All of that is inside of that bag, in small bags, that a child is not going to be able to differentiate the difference between what you would normally pick up at Walmart and what has been purchased. A lot of the labeling that you see is not FDA-approved, it's not specifically gone through the correct mechanisms in order to be sold. But there's no law that prevents them from selling it. So if they label it Skittles, it's up to Skittles to sue, to say they used our trademark and our branding when they branded their product. Skittles has sued several of these manufacturers for using it, so that it looked very similar to candy. You'll see on the packaging, somewhere on the packaging, if it's going to the state of California, it has to have a triangle with a marijuana leaf and the letter CA in it, somewhere on the package. If it was produced legally, and if it's being lawfully distributed, it has to have the label. So we built a class that we use for teachers, school staff. We taught at a couple of chapter houses for parents and grandparents. I heard an echo. That particular class, we go through and show them how to determine the label, how to see what's on the package, and how to look for THC and CBD content on the packaging, so that they know if their child or grandchild has picked up something they should not have. So if you get a chance when we're done, you're welcome to look at that. Don't open any of the bags, they're all evidence, so I do have to return them, so that the person who attempted to sell them... Is that better? How about now? Okay. So the packaging, watch on the packaging, there will be a CA triangle on there, and that's supposed to tell you or let you know that those packages contain THC to some content. And as the superintendent mentioned, we have been to several schools. One of the schools was a middle school where the young lady consumed the entire bag of gummy bears. She had to be hospitalized. We are coming, we're coming up on this more and more often, and we don't think it's intent-based. I don't think she had any intention of consuming the entire bag of THC gummies. I think she was eating a sweet candy that looked like gummy bears, and she ate them until there was none left in the bag. So that's difficult, especially when they remove it from the packaging and place it into a Ziploc bag and bring it to school in their lunch bag. Then it becomes very difficult for a teacher. There's no way of differentiating the difference between a THC gummy and a non-THC gummy if they've been removed from their packaging. So this is also something that we're warning parents and grandparents to be on the lookout for when it comes to that. The THC vapes that you see there, some of them are as small as a USB drive. Some of them look like eye makeup. We also collected one last semester that looked just like a highlighter. Just like a pink highlighter. You pull off the lid, and that's the vaping port. On the bottom side of the highlighter was a charging port, a USB-C charging port. Where this is gonna be very difficult for parents, grandparents, and school staff to differentiate what is supposed to be in their bookbag and what is not supposed to be in their bookbag. So it's bringing us to a different level of what we're looking for. The good news is, two out of my five canines can smell every product on that table. Because they can detect the THC in the product regardless of how it's packaged or what they've added to it. One of those canines, her name is Zell, after meeting with the superintendent, will be assigned to GMCS and BIE schools starting this semester full-time. Her full-time job with her handler will be to teach DARE classes and travel around to the schools and try to detect these particular products throughout the schools, so they can be confiscated and that the child can be disciplined accordingly, depending on what they had done. With that, I would encourage you, there's a twelve percent tax on these products that goes through the state. I would ask if you know legislators, senators, or anyone that can assist us, much like we have a liquor excise tax, and a portion of that needs to come back to local entities for education and enforcement, we're gonna need that for the schools and for law enforcement as well. Because right now, we're putting all this together for free, right? We're doing all of this out of the time we would normally spend doing something else. We're funding this, doing, you know, using state funds and grants that we can find. But there's no money package available to us to begin to teach, to educate, and then to enforce those violating these particular laws. So the other thing I'd like to mention real quick is dope DoorDash. So if you can have these products delivered to your home, not in the city of Gallup, and not currently in the county of McKinley, but you can have these products DoorDash to your home in five counties in the state of New Mexico already. Our city council stood up against that, and it's been put on pause, so no ordinance was passed to allow that to occur. But I would encourage you all to think that that is coming, and if you don't like that, to stand up with those you know and fight that. We don't have a real great way of regulating this. You can already buy on the internet, just like you can buy wine and beer and have it delivered to your home. And all you have to do is provide an ID stating you're over the age of twenty-one, and your state allows for that delivery to occur. You can have alcohol delivered to your front door. These products are gonna be no different. These products can be ordered online and delivered to your front door. So who polices it when it gets to the front door? Who keeps the child from opening the package once the package is open? Who keeps the child from consuming the products that are contained therein? So we are seeing some dark things that are coming out. We are doing the best we can to provide education and enforcement in these areas. But this is what we're currently dealing with and have been dealing with for the last, at least, two school years, maybe more. And I only see it increasing, I don't see it decreasing, which is, means we're all gonna have to work harder in order to fix it. So I'm glad to see the programs the school has set up. I'm glad to see, or we're really glad to be delivering DARE back to the schools to try to provide education, starting at the fifth and sixth grade levels, so that they would know what these are, and bringing back that "just say no" theme to make sure that kids know what decision they should be making when stuff like this is presented to them. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Sheriff?
Whoa. Oh, I'm just gonna bring it up. Is the, this stuff that's marketed more for kids, are they, are they like in, like, kid-sized doses? Or are they, or are these marketed towards kids with like a full adult, you know, adult dosage or whatever of these things?
There is no adult versus child dosing. All of these are being dosed out according to manufacturer specifications, but there is a black and gray market that doesn't answer to the FDA, because they're selling unlawfully. And so those dosages are not marked. They're supposed to be labeled on the packaging, how much THC is contained, either a percentage, or in the state of New Mexico specifically, milligrams have to be listed. How many milligrams are in each serving or in each product that's being possessed? But just to give you a really short version of a very large packet, back when folks used to smoke joints and rolled up the green leafy stuff in paper and smoked it, the THC content of those is less than an eighth of what's in these products now. So what a person may have smoked in ten years doing the green leafy stuff, they are taking the plant and they're extracting the THC out, and then they're able to increase the amount of potency in that and lace it into these particular products. So the amount of THC that's contained in these products is sixty to seventy percent higher than if you were smoking the green leafy stuff.
Is there a federal, like a federal...
Bring up a good point. So what I have in this hand, this green and white, is a THC product. What I have in my left hand is a tobacco product, a nicotine product. Both are illegal to possess under the age of twenty-one. However, one is gonna give you a vastly different impact to your body than the other one is. So to answer both sides of that question, this contains a lot more nicotine than cigarettes. As a matter of fact, this device by itself contains about two packs of cigarettes worth of nicotine that's boiled down into a serum or a syrup, if you will, and then burned off using a heat coil. The other thing to bring up is neither one of these produce a smoke product that sets off a fire alarm. What they do is they produce water vapor, which makes it difficult for us, both odor-wise and detection-wise to detect. This is not gonna fill the room with smoke or vapor, it's just gonna be very minimal. These are very different than the larger vape products we used to see, which had an even higher nicotine content on it, where they would create those large clouds. These do not create large clouds. The harder, the longer you hold it into your lungs, the less actual water vapor ejects and can be seen... Exits and can be seen and or smelled. So to answer your question, both can occur, THC and nicotine, and yes, this contains way more nicotine than a regular cigarette does. The addictiveness of this product is tenfold higher than a pack of cigarettes.
My, my next comment and question is, are we educating our students on that? Because I don't think they realize what. The vape, even if it's just nicotine, does to their lungs. You know, we always see the frying egg, right, when you, they, we, when we were in school, the egg that's frying and what it does to your brain. What are we doing? I don't, uh, even if it's a sign in our school that says, um. These are the, this is what's going to happen to you if you're caught selling drugs or all this, I mean, this is scary. Of the fourth degree felony, three years in jail, $20,000 fine under, on a school zone at 18 years old. You know, those are penalties that should be blasted everywhere for them to be. Even for our students to see that if they bring this to school, not only is there going to be expelled or. But there's other additional penalties of real life that can happen, so. My question in there is, are we doing that at our school? So I am very thankful, I don't know if that's going to happen with our dare program that's coming back. That, that message is plain and clear for our students. That these are, and also even at, when, um, our basketball games, you know, it's right there where everybody can see it. You know, where, because that's where we get a lot of our parents coming through, right, or events where. People need to see those kind of so- signs. So I just wanted to mention the education part of that and then the penalties that need to be, um, posted.
Agreed, and it, and it is unlawful even under the age of 21 to possess one of these is still a misdemeanor regardless of age. So if they are under the age of 18, it's still a charge, it's still a criminal charge in the state of New Mexico to possess this. And it's unlawful, the same criminal charge for them to possess nicotine products under the age of 21. So what normally happens is if a police report is taken, it's turned over to the juvenile justice program. Uh, juvenile probation makes the determination as to what they're going to file and if they're going to file in district court. And then the judge determines what penalty is going to be appropriate for that child based on age and possession rate. As Mr. Stokes showed in one of the slides, you know, a student with 80 of those, that's a distribution crime and that's a felony. Possessing that is not personal use. Possessing one of these in the state of New Mexico is considered personal use and therefore it would be a misdemeanor. So the amount of product that they have on them is very important to the charge and whether or not law enforcement is going to get involved in those. And I am proud to report as we visited schools, um, over the last year, as well as attended many of the red ribbon presentations. Um, the students and teachers were making anti-vape. Um, posters and campaign signs that were being hung, when we went down to visit the Zuni schools and run the dogs down there. All of their big bulletin boards had anti-vaping messages. So I think right now, we're trying to do it on our own and I think what we need is the appropriate funding from the state to do this right. Because it's going to be expensive to roll out, it really is.
Sir, and, and I would like to know what your phone number or hotline number to where we can turn these people in. I've been, in one of the, probably about, I would say, two years ago. Uh, one of the community members came down and was telling me right by the community center, that house right there sells drugs. And I've been trying to tell the police and nothing's being done about it. So I don't know what, is that the process of that, if he can provide that information, not now but later, but. Even just a phone number that we can start giving to our community members to call. To turn in these individuals that are selling these drugs or gummies or whatever it may be, uh, like out from the, not. In the stores, but out there in our communities.
Right, yeah, so we have, well, thankfully, we, we own 911, so we don't quite need a hotline, but. We do have non-emergency lines that can go through our dispatch or go through my office. And between myself, the Gallup Police Department, the FBI and BIA, we have a drug task force in the county. And their number one goal is to go after the distributors. So at the street level, some of the stuff you see on our Facebook operations when we're working in specific communities like Thru, uh, Rama or Gallup. Those are targeted at end users, people that are, are breaking rules and laws within that particular community. Whether it's smoking fentanyl on the streets, um, or breaking in, small property crimes, that's what those are, are aimed at. The task force is aimed at busting those dealers. Um, so you're welcome to call our office or the Gallup Police Department and report those, we forward them all to our task force. And then they work very diligently to the best that they can with the resources that they have. At trying to charge those individuals with distribution, which is always a higher crime than just possession itself.
And Mr. Mortensen, my last question is to Mr. Hyatt. Uh, Mr. Hyatt, so are, are we in the process, I know they said there has been some training. Um, provided to our, to who, our teachers, our support staff? Um, are we doing everybody, are we doing some? I don't, I don't know, who, who's, who's received this training?
Mr. Mortensen and Ms. Benali, sorry. Um, these are the things that we mentioned that are in the PowerPoint that we're doing now, but we're looking to expand that in different ways that we can train. Um, like I said, the Elevate Magazine, we just put a big article out about that, that just came out into people's mailboxes across the county. We're really trying to not just educate staff, but also educate guardians, grandparents, parents and others and students. Um, some of the things that they can recognize and notice that aren't good for their students and or them. Um, and so we'll continue that effort.
Thank you, sir.
Sheriff, one of the things that, um.
I think it works, it works now.
Let me try it again.
Alright, one of the things that, that I think that, that we have a hard time with in our district, one of the things that, that comes up is. And it actually comes up at, at, at my, at my business as well, is we have CDL drivers. And, uh, CDL drivers, of course, this is, you know, marijuana, they're adults and this is something that's, uh. You know, legal in the state, but it's illegal for them with this CDL license and, uh, and can be. You know, it can be, uh, uh, subject to like immediate, you know, immediate firing, things like that. I mean, you can't, you can't have a CDL if you, if you, if you test positive for these drug tests. Um, but one of the things that's a struggle. Is because there's not really a way to, to test, that I'm aware of, there's not really a way to test. That would tell, uh, the person, you know, the, the, the authority figure, like if the person was. Inebriated at the time that they took the test or if they, you know, if they were, you know, high like two weeks previous to that, like it really is kind of like a. Metabolism type of thing with that individual person. Is there any update at all or what the latest thing is, a way to tell if a person? Is, you know, inebriated when they are administered that test or, or is that still just kind of a gray area? You, you test positive, you're done.
Uh, it's a great question, so one, it does stay in your system a lot longer than alcohol does. Which is why for, you know, my agency and I'm sure a lot of others. We've gone to a, a no marijuana, so in 2019 when they legalized it, the day after they legalized it, I came out with a directive that said if you work for me. You cannot have it, you cannot possess it and you cannot use it. Because if they're involved in a fleet-related crash, they're going to come up positive and the state has not yet brought in that. Minimum legal limit like we have with alcohol. Right, so a point zero eight is, is presumed intoxicated while driving a vehicle, we don't have that yet. THC, and this is one of the things Colorado mentioned to us when they're like, don't do it. Um, we don't have a way to do it, but my deputies can. My deputies all went to a, a class called A-Ride, Advanced Roadside Impairment Driving and Education. And in that class, they were able to determine. Your THC products work just like alcohol does in that it's a central nerve depressant. So we're going to get the same signs and symptoms that we get from someone under the influence of alcohol. So when it comes to regulating it for our staff or regulating it for DUI drivers, yes, we can tell. When it comes to an employer for trying to figure it out, short of doing, um, urinalysis tests or hair follicle tests. There isn't a way for an employer to know that unless they've been trained in a week-long class on how to detect the signs and symptoms. Of THC use and whether or not they're under the influence at the time they come to work.
Yeah, that's a, I mean, that, that's kind of the crux of the whole thing, because I, I mean. Anyways, I mean, adults, you know, adults doing things in their spare time is, is, you know, is a different kind of a, you know, it's a different kind of a thing. Than necessarily being inebriated or under the influence when they're actually operating the vehicle. Um, and, and, and so, yeah, I mean, right now with what we have, the information we have now, it's just immediate like zero tolerance.
Correct, and you're not going to get the odor like you do with alcohol, it's much more difficult for an individual, especially an employer, to know whether that person's under the influence. Because the bloodshot watery eyes and the strong smell of intoxicating liquor are not what you're going to get from a THC product. Making it very difficult for employers to know. And a lot of times sadly, when you find out is after they've been involved in a fleet-related crash. You've drug tested them to find out that they came up positive for THC or cannabis products. At which point in time you have to let an employee go and your insurance is going to say this is partially your fault.
Yeah, and then the state jams me for workman's comp.
Absolutely.
Or unemployment, whatever it is.
Fiction and you have to pay for that too, yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Through the chair, uh, Sheriff Mariano, I agree with you. The state rushed this through without thinking and without fully, um. Putting the laws in, they handed it to the local municipalities and counties and said, make it as tough as you can. And we'll deal with it if somebody sues you for being too tough. That's what they told us.
Yep.
And so, so no, they, they didn't, they, they wanted to make it legal and, and. They put a few restrictions on it, but everything else was up to the cities. And I know some cities have limited like alcohol, the number of establishments that you could, um. Grants has, Berlin has, but. If we did it like grants to every 3,000 people, one establishment. We're way above that, you know, we'd be seven and we have close to 20 in the city of Gallup, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Sheriff, uh, we appreciate your support, continued support, uh, that we can count on you and we appreciate the information that you shared. Um, members of the board, there's a couple of things I think in addition to what we were already starting and have been doing. A couple of next steps that might be beneficial in this effort to combat this, this problem in our communities. Um, one is I've talked with Mr. Mortensen, um, about next week making this. Uh, the or part of the presentation to the governor, so she is more aware. Um, of what's happening in New Mexico communities with respect to the laws that have been passed and the lack of. Uh, potential lack of regulation, appropriate regulation, uh, for these types of things, so. Um, we can use some of these materials maybe to present to her in our few minutes that we have with her next week at her roundtable. The other thing was, uh, I'm not quite certain the best way to go about it for tribal lands. I'm assuming that there might be an opportunity to present to the Navajo Nation. Um, in helping them, I know there's no tolerance there already, but talk more about opportunities for enforcement of, of, um. The laws that are already on the books. But also I think there's an opportunity for sure in the city of Gallup potentially to get new ordinances, uh, passed. That can help at least locally, where obviously Gallup is a hub for most of our communities also, where these things can be sold in stores. I don't think there's any other, there's no stores on tribal land or in, in the other communities that aren't tribal land in our county. I know for sure Gallup, um, I've talked to some people that work in the city and are city counselors. I think there's an appetite potentially for us to present and maybe, uh, ask for some ordinances. That help, uh, curb this behavior in our community, so, just a couple, a couple of suggestions to the board.
Can, Mr. Hyatt, um, one of the things that I was kind of thinking about sitting here and I saw Vanessa here. As even ourselves, I know, uh, Mr. Long's very, um. Fluent in his Navajo, but starting to provide those public, um, PR messages on the radio. For our grandmothers that take care, or grandpas that take care of their grandchildren. Um, because a lot of them don't see these kind, and they don't recognize it. But if, you know, and, and if we could pass the message along in our, our Navajo. Language or Zuni or, you know, whatever we can get out there to provide for our children, I think would be great too.
Thank you, I appreciate that, we can do that. President Mortensen, that concludes the, the report that I have for today and I appreciate all those that participated.
Great, thank you, um, ladies and gentlemen, we'll direct your attention down here to item 5C, notices and communication. Our calendar items that you could put on your calendar so you kind of know of some of the important dates coming up. And with that, we'll move into new business. And so the first item is item 6A and I'll turn the time over, back over to Mr. Hyatt for that.
Mr. Mortensen.
Oh, yes ma'am, go ahead, please.
On, on Gallup McKinley County Day at the legislature, um, have we received an agenda or anything? Like you said, I know we do have a time with the governor, has those times have been set yet at all?
It's 10 o'clock next Wednesday is the governor meeting.
But that's not definite because she has, or a week, a week before she can change it.
And she can, there's been times where we've gone, uh, not this particular governor, but the past governor, we've gone there that morning and then he has a representative speaks to us. So it's never guaranteed, even the day of, but that's currently when it's scheduled and then Gallup Day is the following day. Gallup McKinley Day is on the, on Thursday.
Okay, so it'll be on, on February.
It's Wednesday, Wednesday at 10 AM is the meeting with the governor.
And then the following day is Gallup McKinley Day.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Alright, we've got, uh, Board Institute coming up and then the holidays and our next board meeting and parent-teacher conferences. So we'll go ahead, uh, Mr. Hyatt, like we were talking about, move on to 6A.
Mr. Mortensen, I think if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Hanks, that our lobbyist is available right now.
Alright, okay, if everybody's alright with that, we'll skip back up to the legislative priorities with our lobbyist. Oh man, I'm glad he's wearing his hat.
You can see him, Mr. Bullington. We can't hear you though. We'll see if it's on our end. We still can't hear you.
There's this little thing that says the mic is shut off. Right, that.
I think it's on your end JD, you're still, um. Muted, there you are. Oh no, you're good, we're good now.
Yeah, no, I'm.
I'm muted.
I'm muted.
Alright, good, we can hear you now, thank you. We've, this is JD Bullington, he's our lobbyist for the school district and he is giving us a presentation on the. Uh, the board's priorities for legislative session as it's already started. And so we're going to turn the time over to him just to, um, let us know again, the things that he's helping us advocate for in Santa Fe.
Okay. Thank you Superintendent Hyatt, I, I can't see any of you, um, I don't know if you can see me, I can see myself, but anyway. Uh, okay, it's great to be in front of you again. Um, I'm going to give a, a presentation, I'm going to, I'm going to hit these points, I'm going to give a real quick overview of the session very quickly. And then I'm going to go down the bill tracking list that was. And, and then I'm going to go down the bill tracking list that was sent out last night. Uh, to, uh, Javana Hanks and, uh, Mike Hyatt, and I believe you all have. And then I'm going to highlight some key areas. That Mike, Javana and I, uh, highlighted and discussed as priorities when we had a conference call the other day. Um, and then I think one of the most important things is I'm going to go over a document that I think's in front of you. This is a spreadsheet on public school support. Recommendations by the Legislative Education Study Committee and Legislative Finance Committee. And this was the presentation to the House Budget Committee last week by both of those different groups of, from the LFC and the LEFC. And it's going to highlight significant discrepancies in proposed funding. And then I'll, I'll come back and just hit your, your approved resolutions that you approved at the school board level. Um, and tie all this together, so real quick, let me go over the bill list. Uh, it starts with House Bill 2, this is the budget bill, it is still being formulated, but this is where the rubber's going to meet the road. This is where the final spending appropriation recommendations are going to be made. On, on these educational programs in areas like public school support. Um, there, there is no separate education budget that moves separately from House Bill 2. Everything's going to come into, into House Bill 2. Um, House Bill 65, uh, school board should determine the number of school days. This is a position that's strongly supported by the next, the Mexico School Board. This is a position that's strongly supported by the Next, the Mexico School Board Association. And while I haven't talked to Superintendent Hyatt yet specifically about what bills on this list we're gonna support or oppose. Um, I think this is one that's probably gonna fall into the category, I'm guessing that you would, would support this. Having school boards determine the number of school days. Um, I'm just gonna go through this quickly. I'm gonna skip over to the next page. Senate Bill One Thirty-Six, School Firearms Detection Software Fund. I am gonna continue to flag what I perceive to be school safety issues. Um, and I think this is one of them. Um, House Bill Ten is a very significant bill. Uh, we're likely gonna be supporting this once I get direction from Superintendent Hyatt. Um, as you know, this is in one of your resolutions, uh, the enforcement of existing cannabis laws. Particularly how these products are marketed to youth. Uh, this is one of your resolutions. And House Bill Ten seeks to create an enfo, a new enforcement bureau with the Regulation and Licensing Department. To enforce those current laws on, on cannabis. Um. I like that this bill has been introduced. Frankly, I, I was under the impression they had all the enforcement tools they needed. To enforce the cannabis laws, but evidently they feel otherwise. So we'll continue to look at that bill, but I think this one is directly tied to one of your resolutions. House Bill Thirty-One, New Crime, Making Shooting, uh, Making It A Crime To Have A Shooting Threat. Uh, it increases the penalty for this. Again, I think this is another potential school safety measure. So that's why I've included it on the list. Um, House Bill Thirty-Two, Electric School Buses. This is an initiative that is, that has been pushed before. The Los Cruces, uh, Public School District is strongly behind this. Um, but it just amends the public school finance, uh, to require the Public Education Commission Department to allow school districts. To replace school buses with electric or zero emission alternative bus. Um. House Bill Forty, uh, this is a piece, this is a piece of legislation that didn't immediately catch my eye. This bill deals with requiring facilities that receive state funding. And those facilities are those that provide public accommodations to, you've got, it's a mandate for adult changing stations. Not baby changing stations, adult changing stations. And because schools are public accommodation facilities, uh, this would apply to all of the schools in the Gallup McKinley County School District. And there's no financing or funding associated with this. So that's why it's on the list. We're gonna be watching this bill too. Um, on the next page, uh, House Bill Sixty-Three, uh, this is the money bill. This is a bill that's been drafted by the Legislative Education Study Committee. And it is their proposed funding formula changes to the state equalization guarantee. And this is gonna segue into the next area of my presentation on some of the major issues. Which I'm now gonna focus on these funding discrepancies between the LEFC and the LFC. So House Bill Sixty-Three is the LAS, LEFC's version for changing the funding formula. And I think based so far, my conversations with Superintendent Hyatt and Javanna Hanks. I think we're likely to get behind this bill because we like what the LEFC is proposing in terms of changes to school funding. Versus what the LFC is proposing. And when I get to that spreadsheet that shows the differences. I think, I think it's gonna become very apparent, um, why we are leaning on the LEFC side. So this is the LEFC bill. It's being carried by the Chair of the House Education Committee, Representative Andres Romero. Um, so this so far is probably the most important bill on the list. And after that, I'm going to the next page, Senate Bill Eighty-Two. This is a, this is a potentially important bill. Does changes the local match criteria for public school capital outlay. So I'll be having more conversations, uh, about that. And then another bill that I put on the list just, just because we wanna monitor it is House Bill Eleven. That's on the last page, the big family medical lead back. Um, we don't have a position, I've not been given direction to take a position on this bill. Uh, it is, it is expected to pass the legislature this session. It is a pretty controversial bill. Last session it was defeated by a vote of thirty-six to thirty-four. There were eleven House Democrats that voted against it. And, and there will be some House Democrats that vote against it this year. But I think there's a chance it's probably gonna pass the House floor. Instead of failing thirty-six to thirty-four, it's likely to pass the House floor thirty-six to thirty-four. But, uh, there's obviously two sides of the coin to this bill. Yes, it's a tremendous benefit for employees, uh, employers and employees both have to pay into the fund. But there are a lot of institutions and a lot of groups out there that are, that are concerned. About the potential impact on entities that have a lot of employees. And could face some real hardships or difficulties if they lose. A significant number of employees at the same time due to the paid family medical lead backs. So again, this is only on the list because we're monitoring it and we just have interest in it. So that's the bill list. Um, I think I'll do my presentation then open up to questions when I'm done. Here's some of the issues, uh, that we're really flagging, watching out for. Uh, the issue of, of, of cash balances. Um, there are members of the legislature, particularly some close to your district. Who just still wanna go after, um, the ca, the cash balances. There seems to still be an understanding about how these cash balances work. Um, but the fact that you have cash balances at the end of the year is sometimes politically used against you. When it comes to any new requests for funding, they point to, well, you're using all this money for cash balances. When in reality, the, how those cash balances are used and allocated is, is somewhat complex and not fully understood. Um, we'd like to see changes to adequacy standards. We'd like to see changes in the funding for college and career readiness. Um, like to see real sustainable funding for, for CRE programs. Um, we've still got issues with this transportation funding, um. And we're still, you know, not seeing eye to eye with some of the other school districts on this. And I think we've made tremendous inroads with the LEFC on this issue. Um, Javanna and Mike spent some considerable time, uh, with the LEFC staff this last summer on a virtual call that I was on. And did a great job convincing the LEFC staff that things need to be changed here. Um, but we've got issues with the LFC that don't quite see it that way. Um, Native American teaching, um, the law from two thousand twenty-two, which was House Bill Sixty, is not being fully funded. Uh, Level One teachers are supposed to make minimum of fifty thousand dollars, but now they're at twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, so this is an issue that we're gonna continue, uh, to revisit. Uh, I already mentioned, uh, House Bill Forty on the bill list relating to public accommodations. Um, so we're gonna take a look at that. So that's just an example of some of the priority issues that are gonna be on our radar. As we move through the session. Now let me go to the spreadsheet, which I think is probably the most important thing you have front of, in front of you. I'm just gonna highlight a few lines in this. Only gonna cover page one. Uh, there are three pages to it, but I think page one for the purposes of this presentation is all you need, need to know. To see where the discrepancies are and where the issues are. And Javanna, you're welcome to jump in anytime, but let's take line ten for example. Subtotal net proposed formula changes to SEG. Look at the LEFC recommendation. They want a hundred and thirty-two million, five hundred seventy-six thousand dollars more. The LFC is proposing only fifty-six million more. That is, that's the core of the problem right there. Just that line item shows you how far apart the LEFC and the LFC are. On recommendations. Line thirteen, net fiscal year twenty-five unit adjustments, again a discrepancy. LEFC forty-nine million, LFC's at thirty-six million. And the executive, that's the governor, uh, she's at fifty-seven million. So that executive recommendation is of course coming directly from the Public Education Department. So we've got some work to do there on these unit adjustments to get these to an agreeable number that we all, all can live with. Um, subtotal current year cost, program cost base lies twenty-two. You can see discrepancies there. LEFC. Four billion, five hundred five million, LFC four billion, four hundred twenty-two million. Um. Line twenty-seven, subtotal current year SEG, SEG base. LEFC four billion, five hundred and four million, LFC four billion, four hundred twenty-one million. So they're still far apart. That is a pretty big difference. And I think after speaking with Javanna and Mike, it's very clear that we, we strongly are leaning towards supporting the LEFC. LEFC recommendations on this. Um, one more line to look at or a couple more. Line forty-six, Indian Education Fund. Um, I know the Public Education Department wants a lot more to go into this Indian Education Fund. Um, they're pushing for, you know, like fifty million more, even ninety million more. Uh, but there's agreement on the LFC and the LEFC at twenty million. That's probably what that number's gonna be. Whenever the LEFC and LFC agree on a number, you can pretty much take it to the bank. That's what, that's gonna be what it is. Line fifty-one, subtotal of public school support, again discrepancy. LE, LEFC four billion, seven hundred thirty-seven million, LC four billion, five hundred and ninety-six million. So this is something that is a key focus of mine as I continue to have conversations with members of the legislature. Uh, the process is very early, um, but I just wanna say that you've got, you've got a great superintendent. And Javanna Hanks, I, I don't know what I would do without you because of your profound, uh, understanding of how. All the intricacies of education budget and funding work. I really appreciate your expertise. I'm gonna pause there, Javanna, just to see if you wanna make any comments so far on that public school support spreadsheet or anything I've said.
President Mortensen, members of the board and Mr. Bullington online and everyone else online. Yes, and, and the reason that Mr. Bullington indicated that the LAFC has really, um, taken our focus or approach. Is that while LFC and the LEFC are recommending specific changes to the at-risk funding formula. You'll notice they're equal on those on lines four, five, six and seven. Those are all equal across the board. Where they really differentiate is what's gonna happen to sixth grade and seventh through twelfth grade. So LEFC is recommending that sixth through twelfth be increased to an indicator of one point three units. So for every student to translate to units, it would be multiplied by one point three. Currently, sixth graders are, are at one point oh four five and seventh through twelve is at one point two five. The reason that LEFC has brought this forward is discussing all of the additional work-based learning CTE. All of those type activities that we're really trying to introduce into our secondary schools. LFC is not recommending that. They are recommending no changes to seventh through twelfth. And they are recommending sixth grade to go from one point oh four five to one point one four seven five. And so that is the huge difference between their two recommendations. Um, additionally, LFC is proposing a decrease in the appropriation to overall public school support. Citing that the decreased number of students statewide means that we need less money statewide in the school funding formula. So between lines twelve and lines fourteen, that's a difference of about thirty-five million dollars that they're asking to remove. From public school support. And watching committees, largely they have articulated that they believe that due to a lower number of students. We just don't need as much money in the public school funding formula. So those are the huge kind of very far apart. I would also like to say that the LFC is only recommending a, uh, I mean, the LEFC is recommending three percent increase, as is the governor slash PED. LFC is recommending four percent. LEFC and LFC are both recommending a change to, uh, teacher salaries by five thousand dollars per level. Moving them from fifty, sixty, seventy to fifty-five, sixty-five, seventy-five.
Um, thank you, Javanna. I'm really glad you brought up the sixth grade. It was on my notes. I just, I just inadvertently skipped over that. So I'm so glad you went back up to lines, um, seven and eight and, and nine. Cause that, as you just mentioned, that is a huge glaring difference between the LEFC and LFC. And it is a significant glaring difference. So if there's no, if there's no, uh, further questions about, if there's no further question about what I just went over. I'm going to just hit your resolutions real quick. Um, these are already of course resolutions you approved back in September. Um, uh, as you know, the, the, um, so it's Resolution Twenty-Five oh zero zero four. Timely initial final and carryover words. This resolution was specifically adopted as, as written, as you submitted it. By the New Mexico School Board Association. You probably already wear that. Um, so that's in their platform. Uh, funding for homeless students, this resolution was also fully approved as you submitted, as you know. Um, and then the other one, while they were not, uh, approved word for word by the School Board Association. There's enough on the School Board Association's legislative priorities list that I think all of your resolutions are covered. I specifically wanna mention a landing funding formula methodology that's aligned in the Yasi Martinez litigation. Um, this is, this is the big cojona. I mean, this is, this is what the Yasi Martinez fight is all about. Getting the legislature to along the funding formula with the findings of the Yasi Martinez lawsuit. And so far, the legislature has sort of approached funding changes with piecemeal appropriation bills. And small changes here and there and sort of nibbling around the edges. Um, plaintiffs in this lawsuit, including Gallup McKinley County School District, uh, as you've filed a motion, they want a plan. They want the state to adopt a plan that will do exactly what your resolution says. And the court, that motions before the court, I don't think the court has acted on that motion yet. But I think it's widely understood by the legislature that if, if, if the state doesn't, you know, come up with a plan. It's highly likely the court is gonna go back to the plaintiffs and say, okay, you get to write the plan and the state must adopt it. So Superintendent Hyatt, I will stop there. Uh, let me know if I mischaracterized that motion that was made, uh, to the court. For the state to adopt a plan to satisfy this resolution. And then if the state doesn't do it, I think the court's gonna come back to you and the other plaintiffs and say, okay, you write the plan. And the state's gonna have to follow it. So I will stop there and answer, uh, any questions if I can. And Superintendent Hyatt, let me know if I'm on the mark as what I just said about Yasi.
Bullington, uh, one clarification is we have separate counsel for that lawsuit. Uh, we're currently waiting for the state's response, um, to the other plaintiff's, um, proposal. We do not agree with the plaintiff's proposal in, in, in full. Uh, several parts we do. So we're waiting for their response before, before we file our motion in response.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you for that.
But it was, it was a good overview.
I will tell you though, I was. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. I would just add, I was in the Legislative Finance Committee in the late fall. When they held a hearing on this. And the Secretary of the Public Education Committee was there. The Director of the LEFC was there. Senator George Munoz, the Gallup Senator, was presiding as Chair of the LFC. And I, and I will tell you that this issue really, really has their attention. I, I think they're taking that pretty seriously.
Thank you. Ms. Hanks, anything else?
No sir.
Any questions from the board?
Questions?
Yes, please.
Right, Priscilla.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Um, is there anything? Because I was hearing stuff on the radio or on the news about vouchers. And I know we had that, um, on, in legislation years prior. Is there anything on vouchers this year? Is there anything on vouchers this year?
Um.
I don't think so.
I don't think so. Um, vouchers have been determined to be unconstitutional by the Arizona Supreme Court. The constitutions in New Mexico and Arizona are very similar because we were admitted to the union, uh, right, right around the same time. Um, we were forty-seven in number forty-eight states and the constitutions are very similar. And the Arizona Supreme Court has already ruled that vouchers are unconstitutional in Arizona. It's never gone to the New Mexico Supreme Court, but we have Attorney General rulings on this. And it is widely believed, as widely accepted, that vouchers are unconstitutional in New Mexico. So we just don't see voucher legislation. We may say something like an opportunity scholar's tax, tax, scholarship tax credit, which is a cousin to a voucher, but technically not a voucher. We might see that piece of legislation come in, but it's, it's not quite the same thing.
Other question is we, I forgot the bill number, but it was, um, legislation on the tribal education bill, but it was not a favorable or an e- uh, equal percentage of, um, our Navajo Nation students um, and compared to our Pueblo students. Um, has that bill been reintroduced or going to be reintroduced?
I think you're referring to, I believe you're referring to the, the, uh, Tribal Education Trust Fund Bill. That's where we had a big problem last year. Um, I, I have not seen that bill, but it's, it's very early in this session. We only have three days of bill introductions and they have twenty-seven more days to introduce bills. So the Tribal Education Trust Fund Bill has not been introduced yet. Uh, if it is, I'll flag it. Um, I think that's what you're referring to, but I'll also say this, that what the issue you just raised is an issue, it's been a perennial issue in the legislature. There's discrepancy in funding for, between Pueblo children and Navajo children and not, not having that money allocated, uh, equitably. So that is an issue that I'm very, very much aware of.
My last question is for the homeless students, um, legislation that you mentioned. Uh, we do get McKinney Vento funding, but it's not enough. So in that legislation, are they, is there an amount that we're asking for additional funding to?
So there is no bill on that yet, there's no bill on that yet. Um, there may or may not be a standalone, separate appropriation bill. It could wind up in House Bill Two, it could just show up in the budget. Um, but this is an issue that also is very high on the radar Superintendent Hyatt, as Giovanna Hanks and myself, and, and we will continue to have conversations, uh, to find out how we can do this. So the, the funding for homeless students is supported by the New Mexico School Boards Association. I didn't mean to imply that it has been introduced as a piece of legislation. As of now, it has not. So I can't answer any funding questions on that unless Giovanna knows that it's in the budget somewhere.
We did have a discussion in H V A C on the twenty-third, so the House Appropriation and Finance Committee did discuss this. One of the models that they're currently looking at was a paid-for private grant last year in, in a couple of schools that actually provided funding for housing for homeless students. Um, and so that has been the main focus of those homeless student discussions. So that, that kind of wider context, I believe, still needs to kind of get into the legislative spotlight of, of not just focusing on one piece of the homeless epidemic.
Um, listen, I am in the roundhouse and I'm being, I, I have to leave the committee room where I've been reporting from, so I have to go mobile down and may have to step into a noisy hallway, sorry. Okay, thank you.
Appreciate the report.
Thank you.
Uh, Vice President Long, members of the board, that concludes again, uh, present, the superintendent presentation and reports. Uh, I appreciate you taking the time to listen to again, uh, legislation that's happening right now, or at least the efforts happening in Santa Fe and how that coincides with our efforts and your efforts with respect to education for New Mexico and for our school district.
Mr. Hyatt, I know that one of the questions that, um, Mr. Mitchell asked, uh, when we were talking about this was, um, how many of our local legislators, um, are supportive of our, uh, priorities for Gallup McKinley County? And have any of them reached out, um, to you or Giovanna?
Vice President Long, Ms. Benali, um, we currently haven't had specific, had anybody specifically reach out to us. We did, um, talk with our lobbyists to make sure they received our priorities. And if they had any questions, um, we expect that we'll have more conversations with them. With respect to the marijuana bill, some of those legislators will be in the room with the governor. And so we'll obviously be advocating for H B ten and the other legislation that can come forward to help with that issue. Um, but specifically, we haven't had any recent conversations. Although in the lobbyist, uh, Mr. Burlington mentioned that he had not, as of when we, a few days ago, or school days ago that we met with him, I did not ask him if he's received any correspondence since then, so.
If there's no other questions, board members, I'd like to go to new business. New Business A, Mike?
Sure. Vice President Long, members of the board, uh, we have four action items today. The first one has to do with insurance contribution rates. Um, it was a few years ago that you authorized the school district to do an eighty-twenty split. Uh, what this means is that the school district would pay eighty percent of insurance premiums for our employees. The employee would be responsible for twenty percent. Uh, we've continued to use this as a way to support our school employees and also help with recruitment and retention efforts. And we have reviewed this, um, again for next year and are coming to you with a suggestion again to continue to help us with recruitment and retention. Although our recruitment and retention has gone very well for several years now with the things the school board has done, financially and in other ways. But we are asking the school board to do one more adjustment to that where it goes to ninety-ten. We'll pay ninety percent, uh, the employee pays ten percent. We truly feel this is one of those things that helps us retain and recruit individuals, high-quality staff for our students.
Questions, board members?
Do we have that in our packet or is that in a different?
What, what specifically did you?
I just wanna know if it was in our packet that, or is it just?
It's just simply a, a reduction from an eighty, eighty-twenty to ninety-ten.
Mike? Giovanna, how much more is this gonna cost the school district?
Vice President Long, members of the board, Superintendent Hyatt, members of the audience, we're approximating about one point two million dollars to be buried across all funds that the district received.
So what that means, it doesn't necessarily apply, i- it's a part of the salary portion of the budget. Um, and so it's not just out of operational, it's scattered throughout all budgets.
And this includes every employee?
Every employee is, it's available to them.
And to support what Superintendent Hyatt said, we must continue to stay at the forefront, um, of benefits and salaries for, for our, our, um, staff. We believe in the bills that we just recently discussed will help us do that as far as salaries. Um, this is something we can do to stand out as the district.
Mr. Long.
Um. Priscilla?
The other question I had was, I, I know we're using this as an incentive for recruitment. How much, I guess, I don't know how to say it, like percentage-wise, um, how much does this help us besides the sign-on bonus and, you know, all the other, um, incentives that we, that we provide? You know, I, I know insurance is huge, but I just wanted to see how, what the, is it a major enticement?
It is, Ms. Benali, it's, it's significant. Um, obviously pay based salary. Um, the school district, the school board has authorized several other addenda that also provide added opportunities for, for staff to, um, either get money or save money. This is, this is one of those, health costs are ridiculous. Uh, there's been a lot of conversation around that about the high costs and how they keep going up. Um, this is a way for us to support our employees to mitigate those increasing costs. Uh, because there were, for several years in the state, teachers pay or people who work for the school district, their pay went down because of the rising costs. We expect and we hope that we're able to negotiate and have a raise this year for all staff. Uh, but if you have a raise in pay, but then your insurance benefits cost you more, which we expect that they will go up, this helps mitigate that and put the employee on a better playing field where they hopefully get an increase and not a decrease due to rising health insurance costs.
The one point two million dollars that we're gonna be, that we're estimating that we're gonna use for this, are we taking it out of any program or any, nothing's gonna, we're not like taking something away from our programs or we're not eliminating a position or, you know, those kind of things?
Um, Ms. Benali, the only thing that's changing, you'll see that on another action item, is we did reduce, uh, we, we plan to reduce a little bit on the hiring incentives. We felt the health insurance, um, we've been kind of balancing out what hiring incentives we provide. So in conjunction with lowering those a little bit, we felt that that was a good balance with the insurance in, in conjunction with the hiring incentives. Um, it didn't necessarily cover all of that, but I'm letting you know that some of those offset. There are no other programs that we're offering or wanting to offer that's being affected by this increase. So there won't, there won't be any less services to students. Um, the only thing that we looked at in one way that we could balance our recruitment efforts out in was a slight reduction in our hiring incentives. I'm talking about the sign-on, sign-on incentives, the actual money that they receive, receive for signing on and for relocation expenses.
And member Benali, if I may, the L F C recently, um, introduced their legislative appropriation volume, volume two. They specifically call out the issue that Superintendent Hyatt just brought forward, that there is a concern that there continues to be ongoing raises. And because of the insurance costs going up so substantially, typically double-digit increases in the past couple of years, that, that employees do get a raise and then see a lower take-home pay. Um, so I was very happy that we were on the forefront of that because those volumes just came out, but they felt strongly enough to put it in the statewide volumes.
I, I guess the only thing I'd add too is that, um, we obviously look at legislation and what's coming down the pike. Uh, Mr. Burlington talked about the funding formula, some of the changes there. Uh, we, you can never guarantee something, but we expect that we'll have some opportunity there to have added funds to take care of these needs. We're asking now, we usually, we ask this in the budget season, but off, obviously when it comes to hiring incentives, um, sometimes retention incentives, we come earlier to the board uh, so that we can have, be more effective and more transparent during our hiring season, which is coming up very quickly. And so that's why we're bringing this to you now and not in June with the regular budget.
Motion to approve of insurance contribution rate increase from eighty percent to ninety percent, effective from seven, ten, twenty, twenty-five.
Seven, one.
One.
Seven, one.
Yes.
I'll second, sir.
Okay. Motion and second mate on, uh, Business Item A. Roll call, Joan.
Ms. Benali?
Oh.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, board members. Yeah. Let's go down to New Business B.
Vice President Long, members of the board, turn the time over to Ms. Hanks, um, so that we can get our report on our audit.
Vice President Long, members of the board, Superintendent and members of the audience. Um, as our audit is released by the New Mexico State Auditor, it is state statute that you will, um, accept the audit report and of course, any responses that we have to audit finding. Um, you will not have to accept any of our responses because we do not have any audit findings, which I am very happy about, but the, uh, very great gentleman from Hincklen Landers will be walking through some key important notes from the audit, audit, as well as upcoming rules and regulations that we'll be working through.
Uh, thank you Giovanna, good afternoon. My name is McLenn Enriquez. I was the, uh, Senior Audit Manager in Charge for the twenty-twenty-four Gallup McKinley County School Audit. Um, our presentation probably won't be as fast-paced as your, I'm sorry, the lobbyist. Probably won't be as interesting as the, uh, T H C, uh, but we'll get through it together. Um, oh, you said the lobbyist, sorry. Exactly, yes. Okay, so today's agenda, we'll just, um, we'll cover our, the significant audit results. We'll talk about our opinions. As Giovanna mentioned, we would typically cover our findings, there weren't none this year, so that'll be a very quick section. And then we will touch on some new accounting standards that are coming our way over the next several years. So our team, uh, we have Farley Benner, who's a partner in charge, he oversees every aspect of the audit. Uh, again, we have myself, I was the Senior Audit Manager, more the day-to-day guy. And we did have some assistance from Frances and Roseanne. Scope of the work, so what do we do and who do we serve? So essentially, it kind of boils down to providing an opinion on both the financial statements, meaning, you know, we feel that you can rely on the numbers for the financial statement as, statements, as well as the compliance over the federal major programs, you know, your federal funding. Um, as part of that, we also do a lot of state-specific compliance testing, um, as well as what we call non-atest services. So these are services that are kind of outside of the scope of the audit that we still, uh, provide assistance with. For example, um, data collection form, which is, you know, it goes to the, uh, Federal Clearing House. We do upload and provide the data inputs for that. Things like, uh, preparing your audit report, you know, we do put that together in a nice little package there. Um, and who do we serve? So we do all of this to provide an objective, to provide objective fiduciary information for you as the board, management and as well as the public interest. Okay, required communications, essentially things that we are required to let you know. We'll just go down the list here, so accounting practices were consistent. Um, with the exception of a new G A S B that we implemented this past year, that would be G A S B one hundred. Essentially just changes, um, in the presentation for error corrections and any changes to, um, financial reporting. So the way we present that, the way we disclose, those things change. Other than that, accounting practices were consistence, consistent from prior years. We had, uh, seven proposed adjustments this past year, so these are adjustments that we find during our normal procedures, our normal testing. Uh, we had four adjustments there that were provided from management. Um, you know, they let us know, hey, we found these things, you know, go ahead and fix this on your side as well. We have seventy-four, I know that sounds like a, a big number, but we call these non-atest or government-wide adjustments. These are adjustments that we kind of know ahead of time that, that are pretty routine, like putting on receivables and payables, reversing those things. Um, also things like fixed assets and debt, which aren't kept on a day-to-day basis in your financial statements, yet need to be reported on and presented in the financial statement. So we kind of lump all of those types of adjustments in together. So again, there were seventy-four of those. Uh, we did not have any adjustments, past adjustments due to immateriality. Typically, when we find something, we, we make an adjustment for it if we feel that it needs to be made. We did not have any disagreements with management. Um, we are not aware of any consultation, management's consultation with other accountants. Uh, we did not discuss any accounting issues prior to retention, other than, you know, the standard questions and, and procedural things. And we did not have any significant difficulties in performing, uh, the audit. You guys have a great accounting staff. Uh, a little summary of the results here. So again, we did issue an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements. Again, this is a good thing, right? This is what we want. Uh, we also issued a clean, unmodified opinion on the compliance over those federal awards. Um, the, the school's qualified as a low-risk entity, entity. So there's several factors that go into that determination, probably the most important being that there were no significant audit findings in the last two audit periods. So, you know, that's always a good thing to be considered a low-risk entity. And then the major programs that we tested compliance over this past year, you could Um and then the major programs that we tested compliance over this past year, you could see them here. There's three of them, the edu- education stabilization fund, the special education cluster, and the child nutrition cluster. So those are the programs that we tested this past year. Yeah, this is our finding slide, um nothing to talk about as we have not had findings for at least two years. I think it goes back even further than that, so.
Do we not have any finding? I think we had no material weaknesses.
No material or significant deficiency findings. Yeah, in the last two years. Um okay, so just to, you know, make you guys aware, th- this slide here is just some of the new accounting standards that are coming our way that'll affect not just the school, but all of us in the next few years. We have a few of them coming. Uh this year, this next audit, the twenty twenty-five audit, and then, you know, a few more coming on the next couple of years. Won't spend, sorry, I won't spend too much time on them. Uh but I will summarize them a little bit. So Statement one oh one, that deals with compensated absences and the way we are gonna, you know, calculate those going forward. They're gonna, you know, bring in some sick leave and and force us to kind of recalculate that. So bottom line, I would say that the liability related to compensated absences will increase going forward. Um at least for for the next year, and then it'll probably steady out. Next one here, one oh two, certain risk disclosures, um just more transparency, more disclosures in your audit report. I I guess a good example of that one would be, let's say, you, you know, you receive a large portion of your funding from a single source, we would need to disclose something like that in the future, you know, because the thought being, well, what if something happens to your source of of funding, right? What happens to you as an entity? So things like that will now need to be disclosed in the audit report itself. Uh and one oh three, one oh four, these are about two years out. But again, just changes in the presentation, changes in in the disclosures, more transparency, one of which being for capital assets and, you know, the related right-of-use assets. And the financial reporting one is kind of interesting, uh there's gonna be changes to the budgets, the way we present the budgets, you know, typically they're now in the state of New Mexico. It is a little unique, but we put those in the front and we actually issue an opinion on them. This new standard is gonna make us move them to the back and kind of change the way we present as far as now they're gonna require us to um disclose significant variances in budgets, right? So before, we didn't really have to do that, well, we didn't have to do that. Now, there's gonna be a added component there with those new budgets. Just more more GASB, there's always, you know, new accounting standards coming our way. So this is just a little more timeline of of looking a little further out over the next couple of years. But you can see here all the, all this new stuff that's coming. And and we do always, you know, we we read up on guidance, we, anytime we see something come and we do our best and we do um read up on it and we, you know, we we keep up with this stuff. There's a lot to keep up with. Um that's, that's our presentation. Thank you to management, Giovanna and her team. Um if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer any of those if you have any.
Any questions, board members?
Mr. Long?
Priscilla.
Thank you very much. So Giovanna, these new um standards that will be coming along, do you see any problems or issue with us implementing these in the future?
Vice President Long, member Benali, no, um we have good communication with Hincklin Landers. They provide us support. We also, as a department, um me and my staff go to regulatory training to ensure that we're keeping ourselves apprised of those new standards as they're coming out. Um and and of course, once they come out, there may be some adjustments that's happened in the past um as we all agree upon how they're gonna be implemented. And by we, that's usually the governmental accounting as a group, as they encounter issues or various things come up. Um but we've, we've, we've been able to implement very well.
And I just want to say, you know, I I really appreciate that, you know, our our incaution but beso, which means our children's funding is always well um protected um and and the investments and everything that we do for them is all, and shows in these audits that, you know, you could, that as um our staff and as oversight, you guys are doing a phenomenal job. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, board members? Not?
Motion to approve of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four financial audit.
Is there a second?
I'll second, sir.
A motion and second has been made to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four financial audit. Roll call, Joan.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Now let's go down to new business C. Mike?
Vice President Long, members of the board. Um we talked a little bit about this, we're the, we're on the last few pages of your packet. Uh the second and third to the last uh pages go over our requested recruitment incentives uh that we would like to have approved again so that we can ramp up for our recruiting season, which is arriving shortly. Um so there, as I mentioned, there have been a few changes. Uh we uh reduced a little bit on the relocation expenses, that opportunity. Uh the signing incentives have been reduced a little bit, uh but we still kept that uh core goal of attracting local, so we kept those um incentives higher than uh people who we hired outside of our area. And we wanted to make sure that we we get as many local people as possible. Um and so we kept those in that kind of structure. Um and the rest are very similar. So these are the incentives that we are, we are asking again for recruiting season. If there are any questions?
Can you tell me what they were before?
Vice President Long, board members. Um we had more in relocation. Uh I believe we did a, an amount for a hundred miles plus, two hundred and then three hundred. So it went like a a thousand to two thousand to three thousand, I believe, something very similar to that. On the new teachers and counselors, I believe it was twenty-two, twenty, and eighteen instead of what we have right now, so we lowered those costs. There was a few more administrators added with the um where it says signing incentive head principals. We also had assistant principals, directors, and some of that, and that's been um narrowed down to just head principals. Bus drivers stayed the same.
Thank you. Um with that said, Mr. Long, I'd like to motion to approve.
Okay, motions been made by Priscilla to approve. Second by uh Michael Shaw to approve uh new business C. Roll call, Joan.
Ms. Benali?
Oh.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Thank you, board members. Let's go down to new business D. Mike?
Yes, Vice President Long, members of the board. Um our last item is on the very last page of your packet. Um each year, as you know, since you have all been around for quite a while, you understand that there has to be an authorization by you of who can conduct business with financial institutions on behalf of the district. Um and so this doc, this document essentially lays out for you who we are requesting that can sign uh and represent the school district, and so that'd be myself as superintendent, Ms. Hanks as deputy superintendent, and Jennifer Lee, who's director of financial services. Um and that is a a change that we recently had, um that I am going to notify you about now. Uh our recent financial director resigned or will be resigning soon. And in order to keep the district functioning properly and moving forward, um I moved Jennifer Lee into director of fiscal services. So that's a new name for you on this document, the other two names, obviously, Giovanna and myself are the same.
Okay, questions, board members?
Uh Mr. Long? I'd like to go ahead and motion to approve.
Motion made by Priscilla to approve. And second by Michael Shaw to approve uh new business D. Roll call, Joan.
Ms. Benali?
Oh.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Okay, board members?
Motion to adjourn.
We have taken care of business and motion made by Michael Shaw to prove, adjourn. Uh today's meeting, second?
I'll second, sir.
Second by Priscilla. Roll call, Joan.
Ms. Benali?
Oh.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Three oh one.
I can have board members and staff, superintendent, deputy superintendent, assistant superintendent, Joan. For being here, we have adjourned our meeting.